14, 2022. Reminder that this is in person, but it can also be viewed on a local cable channel 1303 or on the internet by accessing townhallstreams.com selecting Bucksport. Questions or comments can be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing estrelasire@buxsportmeeting.gov or during the meeting by calling 469-7368. Roll call, Jake?
Counselor Easton?
Here.
Counselor Morrison?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Visina?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Counselor Ormsky?
Here.
Officer Downs?
Here.
Counselor Rank?
Here. Presentation of Town Council recognitions. We have several. First, swearing of Alan Medina, full-time police officer.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, I'd like to swear all of our four individuals' names at the same time.
We certainly can. We also are going to swear an Allison Corvo-Moore, a full-time animal control officer; Hannah Flashbart, a full-time firefighter AEMT; and Kevin Stevens, full-time firefighter AEMT. And if I blew that name apart, I apologize.
Alan, can you come up? Don't be shy. So if you focus aside, come over. So we're going to do this all at the same time, but when we state your names, we'll go right down the line. We'll start with Allison. We'll each state your name individually, go through the oath, and then when we get to your title, we'll say each of your titles individually. Start with Allison. Go right down the line. Okay? So, you want to raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Allison Corvo-Moore.
Hi, Hannah Foxworth.
Hi, Kevin Stevens.
Do you solemnly swear?
This is all of you now.
Do some solemn.
Do some solemn.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Maine.
And of the State of Maine.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of... State your title.
Animal Control Officer. Firefighter Advanced EMT.
Firefighter Advanced EMT.
For the Town of Bucksport.
For the Town of Bucksport.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to take a minute to welcome you all. Thank you all for joining the Team Bucksport. We hope that you enjoy your time and stay a long time.
I just need your oaths signed before you leave.
I have to show you all a picture of what Hannah was up to today. Just pass that down.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
She was deeply involved in her work.
Uh-oh. No, no.
Well, when I spoke to Deputy Chief Denning today, we were already like four calls into... I mean, if you think every call is two hours to get go and come back, and it's been like that every day. This is just crazy.
All right. Next, I see Alex out there. I don't know who else is with him, but Axel out. Axel, yeah. Axel wants to come in. I don't care about Schmidt.
I don't know if we're going to get Axel.
He's going to stay in the doorway. I don't think he's going to come in.
You don't think so?
He will, but I don't think Matt wants him to be around.
Oh, all right. We have several donations that have been received to support the K-9 program and like to recognize those. There's an anonymous one for $10,000. Madeline Hammersley, a ballistic vest. Randy Hawking, $200. Elaine Morley, a monthly food purchase. And here with us today are Byron and Linda Vinton for $1,000. So I want to thank you all very much.
If I could have just a moment of your time?
Absolutely.
Just to go over each one of these, the anonymous donor for the $10,000, I do have permission to give their name out. I spoke with Mr. Giro. That would be Jim and Kathy Giro with the $10,000 donation to the startup cost of the Bucksport Police Department's first K-9 program. The donation was made because of Kathy's love of animals and understanding of the importance of making the first K-9 team a success. The donation was made anonymously. I knew who it was because they came to me. It was without fear and fear, and they did not need any recognition. Since this donation, Kathy has passed away and is no longer with us. We will honor her by making our K-9 team a success. I want to thank Jim and Kathy for their donation, and I'll be meeting with Jim at a later date to discuss this. Secondly is Byron and Linda Vinton, who made a $1,000 contribution to the Bucksport K-9 team. Byron Vinton was a longtime member of the Bucksport Public Safety Team. Byron retired as Bucksport Public Safety Dispatch Supervisor, later became a member of the Town Council. The Vintons have been longtime supporters of the public safety departments and immediately contacted Deputy Chief David Winchester, wishing to donate to the program. In honor of Byron's donation, Axel will be given the badge number 410, which was Byron's number upon retirement. Madeline Hammersley, that you mentioned, Hammersley, purchased a ballistic vest for Axel to wear while he's working. Madeline is a longtime supporter of law enforcement K-9 programs. In fact, she is an honorary member of the Maine State Police for all of her efforts to aid their K-9 teams. Early in our program, she spoke with Deputy Chief Winchester about her willingness to purchase Axel a ballistic vest. She has purchased approximately 30 of these throughout the state during her time. She recently purchased nine of these for each member of each team that Axel and Officer Schmidt went through the training with. Randy Hawking is a Bucksport resident, public safety supporter. Randy provided Officer Schmidt and Axel with a $200 gift card to pet provisions on Main Street for the purchase of supplies for Axel as needed. This month, Elaine Morley contacted the police department about the K-9 program, and she has generously offered to purchase Axel a large bag of dog food for every month moving forward for the next, I believe, year. So I want to thank each and every one of them, and if the Vintons would please come forward. Sir?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Byron. Linda?
I wanted to mention that I have had two people in this week who have asked what they could do for Axel. Axel, I said Axel's getting more attention than just about anything else that there is, but we've had two other individuals who came in and have offered to assist with fundraising or whatever's needed so that Axel has a successful start. So there's been just a tremendously positive response to our K-9, and congratulations.
That time's gone by. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for bringing Axel in this evening.
You're welcome.
Did he say?
It's been a long day for him. Probably go home now.
Get out of here. Next item is consider minutes of previous meetings. We have Town Council minutes from 6/9/2022 that were sent by Jacob earlier.
Motion approved.
Second. I'd like to bring an item that needs to be fixed on there. One of the resolves from our last meeting, Resolve 2022-54. The Marina budget for FY 2022-23 was motioned, but we did not... We approved it, but it was not a motion.
No motion, no second.
No motion, no second. So I would, at this time, entertain a motion, a second, to approve that budget, please.
Motion to approve the budget?
Second. Thank you. And we already had voted on it, so we just needed to clarify that. We needed to fix that procedural issue. So, thank you, Jacob, for noticing that.
Thank you.
We also have a motion, a second, to accept the minutes from 6/9/2022 with that amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next, we have correspondence. We have an Oren police call from June 28, 2022; two Verona police calls, one on June 27, and one on June 6. We have the Down East Transportation Ridership Report from May 2022, and a Safety Works Meeting Notice from August 23rd, for August 23, 2022. Any questions or comments on those? You have been invited to a lunch, I guess, if you want to go.
And if any council members wanted to go, it's a recognition of the fact that one of now 12 communities in the state for whom all of our town departments are... qualify for the safer Safety Works program. Every department is in compliance, and there's 12 communities in the state that can say that.
Yes.
The first time we got it, which was six years ago, there were eight, and there are now 12 communities in the state that do, and we've maintained it for the six years that we've had it.
Next are ordinances to consider or to introduce. We have the first readings. First one is first reading of Chapter 2, Section 14, Employee Benefits. Second is first reading of Fee Ordinance, adding electrical vehicle charger fees. And the next is the first reading to changes to Appendix K, Land Use Ordinance. Any questions on any of those? We'll set these up for our second and public hearing at our next meeting on July 28. Discussion items: Infrastructure Committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep this much briefer than the meeting was itself. Discover... I discussed four things. The first being the skate park proposal, which was the largest part of the meeting. A group called Skate Bucksport is making a proposal to build a skate park in Bucksport. Discussed a lot of those details in the meeting itself, but in a nutshell, the thing to consider, of course, is if we're going to do this correctly, this would be an infrastructure investment. There are a number of ways we could do this, a number of locations, and those are still under consideration. The only really thing that's... The real thing that's pressing from a time-wise perspective is that they are... There's a ramp being donated to them that they have to get by Labor Day itself, which is September the 5th. So the committee is recommending that the council consider a resolve at our next meeting for $1,500 to assist the group in getting that ramp here. Next, we talked about animals shelter location, and the motion was to have the town manager put together a proposal based on locating that behind the town garage and the property that the town owns there. There wasn't a budding property owner who did ask us to consider as part of that proposal any noise considerations as a result of this, so that... We would like to see that as part of that. We received an update from the town manager on changes to the hours of the fitness center, where there have been concerns. Right now, the fitness center, of course, is located in the Jewett School, and people are in and out of there during the school day. Obviously, that will be beginning in September, but there's concerns that they don't go through nearly the security procedures they go in with bags, et cetera, that employees of the district do. So right now, during the school day, the fitness center is closed, and Sue... Excuse me. The town manager would like to investigate looking at moving the fitness center to the building up near the skating rink, and just getting some information for us on what that would entail. Last but not least, we discussed a bus for the senior center. That was something that the council was asked to consider as part of the ARPA funds that we received, and the town manager asked us to consider looking at fundraising with a council match for that, and there was no opposition from the committee toward that request.
Great. Thank you. Next was the Regulatory Review Committee update.
Yeah, we reviewed the fee ordinance for EV chargers and made a recommendation for 27 cents a kilowatt hour. We also made a recommendation to the council to, as far as employee benefits, moving it forward, as Luke has presented it, and also made a recommendation towards Appendix K with the marijuana updates to the code.
And again, those will all have public hearings next week.
In the Franklin Street.
Yes, excuse me, in the Franklin Street. Changing those to Village Districts.
If I may, and for our maximum charging limit with the chargers.
Thanks, Richard. Services Committee update.
We nominated Linda Moore for the Cemetery Committee.
Thank you. You did a lot of those quick, though.
Don't mess around. Short, sweet.
Right. 27 Main Street proposal, Wish Rock Development. Richard?
If I may, can we table this for a few moments? The developer is about 10 minutes away.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Agenda Items versus Resolve 2023-01 to approve Main Perse Plan Changes for Police and Fire EMS. Yeah, just so everybody knows, there was a revision that came out that basically... It didn't affect it other than it changed 1C from the police to the fire, correct? And just those numbers were reversed in the initial resolve, so we just changed those back. How would the council like to proceed? Motion approved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is Resolve 2023-02 to approve the MMA Legislative Policy Committee ballot. Council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is Resolve 2023-03 to set the 2022-2023 mil rate at $16.95 per thousand. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Any questions? I just want to point out that Sue had put a mil rate comparison of other towns around us. Shows where we are still in comparison to, again, to the services that we have all the time, so we're still in really good shape here in how we're doing things. So appreciate everybody's help and work on that. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is to Resolve 2023-04 to approve the Local Road Assistance Programs Fund for 2022-23. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Everybody saw the proposals that they were going to give us. Everybody's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Resolve 2023-05 to approve the MMA voting ballot. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Resolve 2023-06 to approve the gas/diesel bid for 2022-2023.
You will notice you have two resolves in here for this. One is to accept the fixed price bid from Dead River of $3.82 and change. The other, and a 15-cent rack plus on gas because there were no bids for fixed. And the other resolve accepts the low bid for rack plus for both gas and diesel at 15 cents. And I put them both in because, to put it blunt, this is a crapshoot. I... It's a very... I don't know where fuel prices are going. If they go down, 15-cent rack price is excellent. Right now, the last time they bid, it was 12.5 cents, and the 15 cents is basically the transportation cost to get us... Get it here. And you noted that the other bids were 30 cents. You know, they... One was 30 cents at least. They were significantly higher, but $3.82 is about 30 cents more than we budgeted per gallon for diesel. We budgeted it at $3.50, and so I...
Do we know what rack price is right now? For diesel?
The rack price was on... That was listed on the bid spec that was in the... On the day that they made their bid, which was... It was...
$3.59? Was that right?
It was $3.4998.
Yep.
On the date that they did that, and an additional 15 cents would not have taken into $3.8995.
It's the council's pleasure. Which one do the folks want to go with?
No, you know how I feel. This is...
I don't foresee it dropping that much in the next year, but do we know?
We don't know. And the fact that they bid a fixed price of $3.82, you know, that...
My recommendation, I would take the fixed price.
Yeah, it was a post-what-for.
You know, and if we gamble right, we win. If we gamble wrong, we could technically lose. And again, how much diesel do we use?
56,000 gallons.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's a number that's...
Well, we and the school.
Right.
The school uses a large percentage because it's the buses that we... They use that they're on the same bid price we are, and when I talked to the superintendent about, they're using money out of a reserve to offset whatever the price increase is between last year and...
And they reimburse us?
They reimburse us for every gallon they use. We bill them on a monthly basis.
The advantage to the fixed price is that you don't... You know what you're spending.
I just personally think it's going to take a lot more than a year for things to settle back up, so I think we'd be comfortable with fixed for a year and a half.
I do feel that's what I was looking at, you know?
All right. Whichever direction... I just really...
I'll make a motion, and we go with the fixed price for diesel and the 15 cents for rack on gas.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Resolve 2023-07 to approve the purchase of a police cruiser. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions?
This is nearly...
Yep.
Just... Those are my words.
In the rotation.
There we go.
We talked about this.
And only one bid was all we got from any that were...
I think we already had a motion to approve. Yep.
And this is fully outfitted again?
Right through.
Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, how long does it take to get a... The Spanish animal, Axel, is it real? There's one sitting there waiting for us. If we were able to get ahead of her game, they're supposed to be on this anyway, so...
Supposed.
You've been playing phonehead for... Yeah. Right up until today.
If I may, just so we're all on the same page as that. I asked them for a trade-in price on the cruiser with 60,000 miles on it, and they put in $7,000, and I said absolutely not. So they come up to $9,000. I said absolutely not. It's a $20,000 vehicle. They really didn't want the vehicle, so at this point, I've worked it out with them, and we're going to trade in the old Subaru that the animal control officer has for a couple thousand dollars, has 165,000 miles on it, put that towards the purchase and rotate down so the cruiser with 64,000 miles will go to the deputy chief, his vehicle on the fireside, and his vehicle will go to the animal control officer, in which we're going to have to replace the ACO vehicle for at least $10,000 next year, so we won't have to do that.
How many miles on it?
The cruiser that the... The Denning has now. Yes, there's 100...
136.
130, I think, but it's in much, much better shape than that.
We're going to shift that one down to the ACO?
Yes. Yep.
And we won't be buying one for the ACO then next year?
No.
I heard you say that, right?
Yes, you did. If you know a focus of ACO, the regular cruiser will come back next year.
July 14, 2022.
Put it on the record.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, Sean. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is Resolve 2023-08. Actually, first, I'll bring up an item that's not on the agenda. This was sent to us afterwards. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion, bring up an item on the agenda.
Second. All those in favor? We have the sewer replacement bid that came in that we can finally do, where we got a price that came in below. So I have Resolve 2023-08 for order construction for sewer replacement. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Anything you want to say about that, or...
No, just that if you remember, the first time it came in at $284,000, we only had one bid. We went back to the contractor and said, "This seems like a really high price for this." You know, our budget estimate was much more, and it was based on the need to reroute sewer during it... From a major... Very major sewer line during that, and he worked something out with our engineer and main water that makes that an easier process, and so he dropped the bid to $200,000, and that allows us to do it within the budgeted amount from Sewer Reserve, which was...
My question is, are we required to rebid that with a new process? Should we send that out as a... Because it's changed the scope of work that other people may have bid on.
Nobody bid on it but him. And generally, if there's a sole bidder, we're allowed to negotiate with...
Okay. That was the answer I was looking for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Rich, I see Wish Rock Development is here for 27 Main Street. Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Thank you. I'd just like to give you a brief introduction before Mr. Penn Lindsey joins us up here at the podium. Penn and I have been in talks since May of 2020 during the pandemic. We've talked about different things we'd like to see at the... At the site of 27 Main Street, and after some time, different consideration and different programs for the State of Maine. I think the proposal that you've seen in your packet may align a lot more in what the council has been thinking in the past. It's workforce housing with two spots listed for retail. Am I correct in saying you guys do have that in your packet?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'd like to do now is bring up Mr. Penn Lindsey from Wish Rock Development. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Good evening, everyone. Thanks very much for having me tonight. Appreciate it. As Rich said, we have been talking for... Going on two years now about parcel... As Rich said, we have been talking for, going on two years now, about parcel of 27 Main Street. We had originally come to Rich and had some, had some ideas, but let me just sort of tell you, back up, I guess, a little bit, tell you a little bit about who we are. So my firm is called Wishrock. We are a housing development company based in Portland, Maine. We do quite a bit of work outside the state, but we also do a lot here in Maine. And so, one of the primary programs that we use for housing is the low-income housing tax credit program. And in talking to Rich over the last few weeks, you know, he indicated to me that there had been some proposals for this parcel, some of which, one of, at least one of which was for low-income housing, and that that wasn't necessarily what the, what the town was looking for. And I mentioned to Rich that there is a new program from Maine Housing for workforce housing. And this is housing that is restricted to people who are earning at or below 80% of the area median income. And Rich seemed to think that may be something that was interesting to the council. He also mentioned that some retail space would be interesting as well. So what I did was, I spoke to our architect. We put together our financial pro forma to see if we could make something work. And I'm pleased to say that I think we do have a proposal that could work for 27 Main Street. And what it would do is take this program that Maine Housing is currently working with and accepting applications for, and that would provide subsidy. That would allow us to build a project. We would also take out a loan, and that would provide the sources for the construction of an 18-unit residential development. What we've put together and what you see in your packets is a, a very conceptual design at this point, just to give a flavor for, for what we're thinking. It would be two stories. It would have 18 units, as I said, 12 two-bedroom units and six one-bedroom units, and two retail spaces, which would be 600 square feet each, on the, on the sidewalk, you know, street-facing side of the building. There would be, you know, parking for each of the units off-site, sorry, off-street, excuse me, onsite but off-street. And our expectation is that we would have two, or one parking space per bedroom. So in other words, a two-bedroom unit would have two parking spaces, a one-bedroom unit would have one parking space, and that's what we've drawn. What, what I'd love to do is, is take a few questions about, you know, what, what we've put together. I would say this is very, very preliminary. I wanted to get in front of the town council tonight as soon as possible because there is some time sensitivity with this Maine Housing program. The subsidy is first come, first served. And so what I would like to ask for tonight, if it makes sense to the council, is a, is a vote, I guess, which would empower the, the town manager to write a letter of interest to Wishrock for the proposal that we'd be making and the application we'd be making to Maine Housing. Because as part of their application, Maine Housing does require some indication of site control. Now, what, what we'd be asking for tonight is non-binding on the, on the town in any way. And the, the letter, you know, should we decide to move forward, would say something along the lines of, you know, pending the successful completion of the town process, which would include going in front of the Economic Development Committee, coming back in front of the town council for, you know, multiple readings and, you know, a chance to really get into the details of what we're proposing, and actually work together on putting together a, a development plan that is most appealing to, you know, to the town council. But what having this letter would allow us to do is to put an application, and hopefully by next week, to Maine Housing, so that we could get in line for this subsidy. Because as I said, it's, it's very competitive, they're getting a lot of interest for it, and it's first come, first served. So with that, I'll take a break and happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Yes. What's the average time it takes for that application to get approved or kicked out or whatever? What's, what normally do you say?
Well, it's hard to say because this is a brand-new program. But I do know that Maine Housing is very motivated to move quickly.
A brand-new program? You mean this is, you're like breaking ground here or?
Well, they've never, they've never done this, as far as I'm aware of, they've never done this work, this kind of a workforce housing program. Most of what Maine Housing does is low-income housing, which is residents who are at 60% of the area median or below. And what this is, is residents who are at 80%, so it's a, it's a higher income bracket that would be qualified to live in these apartments. And I'm not aware of a program where, where Maine Housing has done this before. My guess, though, to answer your question, is that they would process this in, it would probably be, you know, two months to three months, something like that, start to finish, from the time we submit our application to the time they review it, come back to us with questions, you know, and complete their processing.
I, I would note that the programs before that have allowed any 80% units required a 30% offset, not a 60%, a 30% offset for units in a development. If you were going to go at 80%, you had to have dedicated units that were also at not moderate, but low income as well. The proposal that Wishrock has outlined is half the number of units that was identified in the last one, which the council sort of thought was outsize for their location and didn't, hadn't, didn't have a dedicated retail space kind of thing. And the other thing is, those were all one-bedroom units. And these, the, the income for two people in a unit is $51,000, which when we were talking to people who were interested in this, our seniors and some people who were looking to downsize, indicated that the 60% was too low, you know, they, they couldn't make it on that. But if at 80, at $51,000, two people who had retired, that would be something that would be affordable for them, but also put them on, within walking distance to the grocery store. Not that this is senior, workforce is, relates to, more to the percentage of median than it does to anything else. So when Mr. Lindsay met with us earlier, he indicated that his, his request is for a letter of interest on part of the town, not a letter of commitment at this time, until his proposal had been vetted, like every other proposal gets vetted, through economic development and those kind of things, so.
All of that? There's no restrictions as far as, like, small families eligible for this, things like that?
There are not, no. So you could have-
In two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, you could have, yeah, it'd be a small family, but you could have, you know, a couple of adults and a couple of children. I, I should probably clarify that the proposal that we're making is, is one that involves getting this, the subsidy for Maine Housing. We're also asking for the town to provide the land at no cost. And we will also be asking for a TIF in order to, in order to make these numbers work. It's, it's still a very, it's still very tight. And as you probably know, some people have come to propose projects on this, on this land, and they've, and they've proposed 40-plus units there. And the reason they do that is because making these numbers work is, is challenging. We're really excited about this program for Maine Housing, though, because it is giving the subsidy that I think that this parcel's gonna need in order to get developed. But it would be us coming to the town and, and moving forward as a public-private partnership, really, on this, on this development.
This housing that you're talking about going to the main state, do they, do they have restrictions on the cost of materials? If you were gonna go buy materials locally, are they, are the retailers restricted as to how much they could charge you for the materials?
No. I, I mean, I think Maine Housing wants to be sure that we use their resources as efficiently as possible. And they do have certain construction characteristics that they do require, particularly in their, in their low-income housing tax credit program. This is a different program. So Maine Housing does have some requirements. We'll learn about those more in, as we go through the processing of this application. But in terms of the cost of the materials, I don't think Maine Housing can, can put any specific limitation on that. But they, they are aware that construction materials and labor have really been skyrocketing in the last, you know, couple of years. And so that's part of the reason why they're making the subsidy available.
Yeah. What, what is your position with the company?
I'm the vice president of development for my company.
Development?
Yeah. And that's what we, that's what we do. So we, we do a lot of acquisition of existing properties, and we renovate them and own them for the long term. So we are not a company that comes in and, you know, develops a property and flips it and moves on to the next town. Primarily, particularly with, with most of our buildings, which are Lytec properties, we develop those properties, whether it's building new construction or renovating existing, which as I said, is kind of what we do more often than not. We own those for at least 15 years after we develop them.
Yeah, we had an architect come and tell us that he was working on a project in Ori Creek, and they were building workforce housing for Jackson Lab. And it was costing him, it was supposed to be moderate-priced or low-priced housing, it was costing him $200,000 a unit to build those units.
Honestly, that doesn't surprise me. I, I think what we have modeled right now for this building, this, you know, prospective building, is over $200,000 a unit to, to build it. And, and it might be more like 230 or worse thousand a unit when we're done.
Do you folks manage this, this property too? So you're, you're not just the developer of the property, but you're actually the management of the property?
So in this particular case, we probably will be the manager. We have a small management company, and we do some self-managing. Often with our properties, what we'll do is we will hire third-party management to, to run it. Because this will be such a small property, for us, this is very small, we typically do properties that are more like 100 units, but-
Like down the road a little ways?
But for this one, to answer your question, we'd probably go self-manage.
Okay. So you, so you, so you can do that?
Yes.
That's not new to you, to run something? Okay. Thank you.
And if I may, interject in regards to the TIF, Kathy might recognize this, but this law was actually just passed this past October 18th, and this tax increment, Financing Act, the law permits tax increment financing to be used by municipality to cover costs associated with the development and operation of affordable housing, even if the district is not organized and is an affordable housing development district. And that came, again, effective October 18th of 2021.
Any other questions?
Yes. Just a quick one, just because I'm, I think I'm picturing it, and I want to make sure I am picturing it. How big approximately are the retail spaces?
600 square feet.
Okay.
So, you know, it's the kind of thing that would be good for a small retail shop, sort of a sole proprietor type office space, maybe like a, sort of basic food service, nothing with a, with a big kitchen, but like a sandwich shop could probably fit in that space. That's what we're envisioning.
Okay.
I know this is preliminary sketches, but about how far will this back lawn area be before the incline? And are these trees or huts or?
So, yeah, as you're, as you're looking at the site plan, the question is, is how far, how far back the, the building will go? And what, what we expect to have to do is build some amount of retaining wall there, probably not a big one, and hopefully be a fairly low retaining wall, but, you know, even, you know, a three or four-foot retaining wall buys us five or six feet, you know, of lateral distance. So, but the, but as of right now, the slope comes almost down to where this tree line is, here. So it's, it's pretty tight back there. And then, as you can see, these parking areas even go a little bit further back than the building does, and that's where we'd expect to have to do some, some retaining walls.
Okay. Any other questions? It's council's pleasure, allow the town manager to entertain a letter of interest?
Second?
All those in favor of that? There you go.
Great. Well, thank you all very much for your time this evening. I look forward to hopefully working together with you to make this happen.
Appreciate it.
All right. Great evening.
Where are we? Appointments? I have an appointment with Linda Moore of the Cemetery Committee, has been recommended by the Services Committee. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of quit claims, discharges, and deeds. First is a tax lien discharge, Kelly J. Albert, MAP 047, Lot 15, 63020 lien. And the next is a tax lien discharge, Kelly J. Albert, MAP 047 dash 013 dash 001, 63020 lien. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Get signatures on those. Department had reports.
Okay. Our assessor plans on committing taxes on Friday, July 15th, if our Trio software has been updated appropriately so that the commitment can be done correctly. And as of this writing, there are still significant issues with the way the software is functioning in order to get to our commitment. And if that is the case, it will be next week until Trio can. We, we commit earlier than virtually everyone by doing it in mid-July. Most communities on a July to June are not committing until August or September, but we will commit as soon as the software allows. A note of thanks to Terry Doty and the Bucksport Bay Business Coalition for the Bay Festival events on July 2nd and 3rd. The weather was challenging at times, but overall it cooperated, and it was great to see people in town walking the waterfront, listening to music, and watching the fireworks. I attended the facilities meeting with RSU 25, their consultants and representatives from other RSU communities on Tuesday, July 12th. I had a chance to learn about the heating, HVAC, energy savings, and overall control system needs for the schools in the district. Phase one includes new boilers at the high school and Miles Lane School, radiant heat repair at the middle school, HVAC installation at the Jewett School, as well as boiler replacement, and energy-saving projects, lighting and insulation at all schools. The total project estimate is $4.179 million. As a result of energy and operational savings and debt reduction, the additional new tax impact to Bucksport is estimated to be $3,740 a year for the 15 years of the financing. I impressed, am impressed with the due diligence that the RSU has done in assessing these needs through comprehensive evaluation and with the prioritization of the work to be done. Phase two will include an exterior masonry wall at the Bucksport Middle School, refurbishing ventilation with automation control in the high school, middle school, and in the Miles Lane School. Funding for that phase is proposed to come from state revolving renovation fund loans, with a balance made up from capital reserves that the school has. Phase one will begin immediately with an 18-month construction window, and phase two is estimated to begin in 2023. And I didn't attach it, but I will supply you with the strategic phasing plan provided by Superintendent Boothby, who will be making his rounds to discuss all of this with you as council. I'm pleased to note that the Bucksport Historical Society's Paper Mill Museum Working Group has installed a window exhibit and a community pharmacy storefront, supporting their fundraising campaign for the museum, which will be located at the guardhouse at the former mill site. Donations for the project can be sent to the Bucksport Historical Society with a note on the check that it goes to the Steel Mill Fund at PO Box 798 Bucksport, Maine. Our pool numbers at the Tim Emery Pool through July 13th, a total guest of 2,748, average guest per day- guest per day, 125. The town members of RSU numbers are 2,548, and persons not from an RSU community, 200, indicating that 92.7% of the usage is from RSU 25 communities. And we are tracking that because of the closure of pools and the reduction in hours of other areas to make sure that we're serving the RSU community appropriately. The RFP for consultant for the PPI project with the MDOT that the council approved is out, and proposals are due back by July 27th. We will have a recommendation for the council at your meeting on the 28th for that consultant. To continue bothering people, Drive Show Main is...Bucksport was the winner of the Drive Show Main 92.9 radio station Town of the Year contest in 2021, and we are also in the running in 2022. And at this time, I mean, like, right now, we are in the quarterfinals competing with Greenville. It is a very close race. Voting for this part of the contest ends at noon on Friday, July 15th. I encourage everyone to vote for Bucksport. You can find them on Facebook at Drive Show Main or on their website at 92929thicket.com. You can vote once a day on each of your electronics. If we're successful in the quarterfinals, the semifinal vote will start on Monday, and I'll be...I've been annoying the heck out of our Facebook page with postings about this program. And finally, there's a new senior citizen tax program that was adopted by the legislature. The legislature passed this past session. It allows for senior citizens who are 65 and older, who have owned a home and had a homestead exemption for 10 years, to have their taxes frozen at the level of the prior year's tax, with the state paying the difference of any increases to the community. The application deadline is December 1st for the 2324 tax year. It is not in effect for the 2223 year. People will have to reapply annually to participate. However, the state has not yet provided us with any information in terms of an application or how the process will work. For those who have been calling us for information because the media has been promoting this, please be patient. Just as soon as we have any details on how this will work, we will publicize it. In the meantime, the assessor is keeping a list of persons who are interested in the program. I think that effective date of this is August 8th, but Revenue Services, when contacted early this week, said they weren't sure when they were going to be able to get us an application. And it hasn't been determined yet how the whole reimbursement to communities will occur or at what level, because the requirement isn't actually over 50% of the law. So there's a lot of moving pieces to this thing that need to be ironed out before the state law deadline of December 1st for an application that we don't even have the application for yet. So...But for everyone who's heard about this that thinks that we have it, we don't. But as soon as we do, we will publicize how it's going to work and all that kind of stuff. There's no income limit on this. So anybody who's over 65, who's had a homestead and owned a home for 10 years or more can apply for this. So it has a huge fiscal note for the state. So...
Thank you.
Any questions? Next, we have approval of licenses. First is liquor license renewal for Friar's Brew House Taproom. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is a liquor license renewal for Kerry's Main Lobster. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is a liquor license renewal for American Cruise Lines. How would the council like to proceed?
Oh, wait a minute. That's something wrong. Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is approved Wednesday on Main Event for July 27th at the gazebo. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. You're back in the room now, here on the side?
I'm always.
Yeah. Finally, we have use in the town office parking lot on 8622. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Any want to say about that, Rick, since you're here?
Yes, this is for the Grand Pondo Hinkapee Race. That's typically a race that's been down south. DC Winchepther and I met with representatives from all over the greater Bengal region, and it came down to two regions, up here and then down in the Westbrook area. They chose this area over Westbrook, obviously. It's a three-year commitment, and simply, there's three different legs to this bike ride, and the founder and owner will actually be taking the ride. They initially asked about the Veterans Memorial, but my thoughts were due to safety concerns of Pine Street being right there, the light being right there, blind spots, that this would be a better location for them. It's only needed for, I believe, four hours. The view of the fort, they fell in love with this location and thought it would be great. The only inconvenience, and I'll deal with Luke on this, is that there is an apartment down here that has a vehicle that's parked down here, and we're going to ask if they wouldn't mind parking on the road that evening.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have discussion items on the agenda for the council of the public. Anybody from the public? Yes, sir.
John Daniels on 19, who I brought on. Someone in regard to the ordinance change, but I did mix in some other issues, so I'd like to present those two quickly, try to move forward through them. Swipe left. I'd prefer that the planning board had notified the property owners of the zone change, in particular, the restaurant change. Obviously, the marijuana sales, properly described as a low impact, so I'd like to...But I've mixed in a little bit of some other issues that have been haunting me for some time. Swipe left. Those photos. That's my property, just quickly, I hope so keep it maintained.
Sorry, I'm going to have you sat there so the people can hear you talk, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me get this on the phone. I think we can all follow along. Okay, the first photo, the red photo, is just my property. Swipe to the next, that's across the street, that unoccupied old Ed Mercer's property. Obviously, see the unpainted plywood built in. So the next swipe is the property, used to be the Al Gray property, which is unmowed, hasn't been mowed for some time. Then the view from the other side of the street to my property. See, again, showing the second property that I own. And now we move to across the street again, to that rest of property, and note that mailbox. I have a photo there that in 2012, I finally threw that across, took that off the sidewalk and put it there, and it's still there, 2020. These buildings are being removed. This is obviously the second home, has some issues. Windows are all falling out, the roof has collapsed. Now we get up to the one with the oil tank. I have concerns about leakage of both buildings, since I'm downhill, and obviously, that one time had gas, gas and kerosene. I understand that those have been properly removed, but I do have concerns about oil tanks. I don't know what the status of them are. There's two buildings there. The roof looks to be leaking, and that would be kind of a...could run across the street onto my property or David Grant's property. The issue with the white siding just showed that that property has never been weed-whacked for years, and Phyllis and I, our finally, our patience has kind of worn thin. This is the front of the property. Rod steps, been there for years. And we have a vendor that sells veggies, and we have all kinds of customers come to town. That could be cleaned up. I mean, just good neighbor stuff. I'm not talking about extensive overhaul, but that is not a good neighbor practice to leave it like that. These steps are on the, used to be the Wardwell bought Al Gray's property, and then to get the third lane in for Family Dollar at the very last of the DOT project, they put the third lane in, which was Wardwell's responsibility. And by the way, that bank, originally, the plan was to landscape it with, but that's a rough-cut bank, was never finished. That's across from my home, and those sort of steps have been there since the Family Dollar was installed. I have no problem with Family Dollar. I go there, it's a great property, the parking lot seems to work fairly well for, you know, the original project, but I do have some issues here that...You see the one with the paving? The initial plan called for two applications of pavement, only the initial primary coat was applied, from my understanding, and of course, that has been broken up quite a bit. Now we move to the one with the signage. The original plan stated that that would have rhododendrons. They were planted and died, and no attempt has ever been made to do any landscaping whatsoever for shrubbery, even though the plan did show that. Here's wear and tear on the roadway. Signage, very small. David Milan had to finally put those in himself. They...This one shows the recent renovation. They did paint the upper portion of the property, but the rest didn't get done, and I asked one of the workers there, and he said, "That's it for painting this year." I happen to work in the paper mill in electrical, and one of the vendors that comes in from Standard Electric did painting on the side, and he said, "Gee, I'm not longer doing those projects that..." What is such a minimized job, I just, you know, I've stopped doing those. And since then, those, the parking lot hasn't been updated much. Again, just the other side for the exit. That's pretty small, which...Oh, by the way, that road, we put $79,000 in that road with the TIF money and to help manage traffic. And I'd like to see proper lot lines, directions, bigger signs, so that they use that road that the town spent considerable money on, and it does make visibility, traffic management much better. Again, if you move to the...Now that we're going to have a sidewalk down there, if you look real closely, there's the old fence that was originally put in, which is required by our ordinances. Here we have, in this photo, I show the rocks have been pushed back with a snowplow. And that's going to happen. It's winter time, you push the stuff. But they haven't been reset, and if you look at the profile of that property, if someone leaves an automobile in neutral, and those cars either cross the highway or run into homes across the street, you know, that's the intent of the rocks, is to give us some Oh, here's a collapsed roof on the Mercer property. This one is showing landscaping on my property. And it's pretty much deer-proof, and I think the point would be is that the MUGO is a low-profile, so you could put those in and, you know, not have interference with visibility. Plus, you could put log trees in if you want to protect something like, much like they did out with the industrial park, where the sewage processor is. That was part of an application, and those have grown up really well. On the other hand, here's other businesses, all recently painted. The signage is excellent. Is that the gas station, a lot better's? Again, nice signage, nice paintings. When we had the flood, we had two floods on Route 1. This rock is pushed into the drainage system, and I did report it to the group that it came to try to help manage, but that must not have got passed on. So that's blocking one of the large pipes. And again, that's showing, that's on Alice's property. That's just a kind of a feel-good thing, that's from my rooftop, skip that. This is the old Al Gray home. Al painted and maintained that home, and I think the valuation was $150,000. About new to Galact, the home failed, and at one time, they asked the town to burn it down, which the whole point of the TIF was to encourage growth, and had we saved that home, over the years, that would have been probably a $200,000 asset on our tax base. But instead, it failed and was torn down. Here's one of the cottages that is going out, which, you know, has some expanse, and that's great, but it would be nice to have some weed whacking down, and that was done without permits. Here we have the flood coming down into that drain that I said that's restricted. All response, Bucksport response to that flood. This photo is related to the actual issue coming up about, you know, the property on our side, how steep it is, the grades, it's extremely steep.
So, so, we've looked at all these pictures, and what you're asking is, does the town look into this stuff?
Yeah, yes. And the good news is I'm almost done. That recently has, Luke, that was torn down yesterday, I think. This is up on the Johnson, up next to Glenn's. That was, how was that vacated? And then lastly, there's the view of the motel, you know, as we enter town. I understand that's not a transaction, but that could be neatened up for the good of the town. I'm just...That's kind of my... I do have some other photos of the old signage at Rite Aid, or actually at Wartos's, that was there for years. Those finally have been improved. I did show some photos later on of some building damage where people had actually run into the old Rite Aid. That's why, you know, we do have ordinances to put those stanchions in. I'm talking about some positive stuff. And obviously, McDonald's has always been excellent at landscaping and fencing and traffic management. So it's...But that's where, with good neighbors, good neighbor practices, we all work well together. But I'm quite frustrated with the business side of Route 1 and putting restaurants without any guidelines, changing that change would be insignificant, so...
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Much appreciated your time. Appreciate your time.
Anybody else from the public have anything?
I'd like to give the council a little quick update on the wall project for this year. Again, it's three walls on Central Street and two on US Route 1, the Johnson Residence and the Cunningham Residence. Two of the walls protruded on to the property line, the rest are in the right of way. So today, I secured the Cunningham Residence. I was able to get the easement signed by her. I am, I went to 35 Central Street, it's the Gray Residence, so if they're listening, I sent you a letter. Please respond back to the town. It's holding up, these are holding up the project at this point. Goal is to have that signed, put out to bid, and started by the end of August, beginning of September.
Thank you, Rich. Excuse me. Anybody from the council have anything on the agenda? Ed?
I have a four-part question. Just status updates is basically what I'm asking. Central Street with the state deal, where we're at with that. Town Dock, that, you know, expansion, if that will happen, and status on that. Properties that are foreclosure or in limbo, where we at with all those? And, I should know this, but is Broadway being paved this year?
Yes, that, yes, there's a, I can start at the beginning with you.
Whatever you want.
Okay, Central Street is in the hands of the state. We've given them back the idea that we would be willing to do this, but they would need to be more than a slapping at coat of pavement, and that it would require some sort of a, of a partnership agreement to do the kind of work. They would need to be responsible for the drainage issues out on the end of it, right before it gets to Millvale, prior to us, but it's in their hands. We've given them their stuff, they have not gotten back to us since then. The Town Dock project is fully engineered and looking for money, I guess. The Holtrachem is not out of the, is not out of the realm of possibility for funding, but, excuse me, the, the group that's going to be deciding what gets the public part of the money hasn't, hasn't formulated how it's going to do that yet, but that, that's an in process. We don't, unfortunately, qualify for the federal programs that are set up for that, for those kind of things, but the Holtrachem is where we're looking right this minute, as opposed to a more piecemealed approach by the grants that we are, which are much lower than what we want to get in terms of being able to do this project without bankrupting the community in the process, but. That is still in process. And then the foreclosures, actually, I started sending out letters today to property owners who own property that is not their primary residence, but is in tax or sewer foreclosure with the town. We have a number that are land or, or apartment buildings or second, they're not a primary residence, and the, I've started with those as, sent out letters saying, this needs to be, this amount needs to be addressed in order to avoid public sale authorized by the council. We have always made an effort, never to sell a primary, to always try and help someone who lives in their home stay there. We've worked very hard on some really tough cases to do that, but we've, we've done that. But the idea that people who own multiple properties, and they're not resident in them or they're renting them, and are still not paying their taxes is not appropriate, you know, that, those are the ones that I've started with for, not that there's a million of them, but there's, there's some, and I've given them a 30-day window, and if they don't comply, you'll be seeing them on an agenda for sale. And the other part of that, Luke has developed a list of properties that are either vacant or, they're not all in foreclosure. Many of them are not in foreclosure. They're vacant or in a state of dilapidation that the council will have a chance to look at how you want to address. They're, they're not in violation of anything, but the properties are in poor condition and vacant, so that's, that's where that one is.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you get the answer all four?
For the most part.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Everyone chief, the house out on 46 that has a truck parked next to the road, I get a lot of complaints about that truck. Eighteen sixty-one or whatever the number is out there, the house that's just fully pitched out over the, let's say, before Holy Oaks. There's a truck that's parked right next to the road, and I've had lots of folks ask what's going on, why, why can't that be moved, or should it be moved?
We've made several attempts to make contact with the homeowners. They're not very receptive to our attempts.
Is it, is it in violation of any?
No, it's actually on their property.
Okay.
But we recognize the issue that it causes when we make attempts, further attempts.
Well, I, I say, I noticed it, and I've had a bunch of, a bunch of folks come and question that, but thank you. I saw in your report, we're not any further ahead by having that being cleaned up or fixed out there?
No, we proposed, but.
And the eviction is taking a long time, which is the issue.
All right. Public hearings, committee assignments, I don't think we need to have any.
I have, I have.
Oh, sorry.
I have pulled up a thing about the Services Committee. Purpose of the Services Committee shall be to review all matters related to administration, department functions, social and community services, technology, appointments, employment, and negotiations. That doesn't seem like what we do on the Services Committee.
What are you missing?
We approved one appointment today on the Services Committee meet, we had a half an hour, and we used about three seconds. And we got into a meeting, council meeting, and I watched four or five people line up here and get sworn in. I don't recall as a member of the Services Committee seeing those people before that, this right here.
Those are employees, though. The Services Committee doesn't deal with employees.
I think it says employment is the next to the last thing, and negotiation comes after that.
Okay. Okay. I'll have to look into it, Jim, because we've never, we've never.
I understand we've never, but we have an assignment here, a statement here saying that this is what we do, and we just ignore it. We just go on and go on with our business.
Yeah, we'll check it, but the town council is not in the business of hiring full-time employees.
I understand that, but.
Those aren't appointments.
What's that?
Those aren't, those people aren't being appointed by the council.
That's right, that's right, but.
Swearing in, it's mostly ceremonial.
The hiring has already taken place.
Yeah, I mean, the town manager and the department heads are, it's, it's different.
Well, I just see in front of me, and interpret this to say, that I'm to be involved as a member of the Services Committee, I'm to be involved in matters related to administration, department functions, social and community services, technology, appointments, employment, and negotiations. That just tells me that I'm pretty important. All I seen myself was hiring the dog catcher, or somebody for the Cemetery Committee today, and a whole bunch of people got brought in here and hired.
But we don't do hiring, so what would we do?
Approve the hiring, I think.
No, we don't do that, Sue. Will you?
No, there's no authority for the council to approve my hiring, but the authority of the council is to hire me and to approve appointments to the committees that the council has, and I think that our charter says that, that department heads are confirmed by, by that, which I would have to check, but the employment piece would be related to your only employee, which is me, not.
So this should read, the purpose of the Services Committee is to approve appointment. That's all it should read.
No, there are matters related to administrate, administration and social agencies, and all those are the kind of things that you need to discuss as well, but the only thing that I'm saying is that the employment one is not related to every person that is hired by the town, that your charter provides me with that responsibility, other than appointments to committees, et cetera, that the council does. That's, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to explain what.
I'm not either. I'm just telling you that I'm reading this, and this is what it's telling me, and if it's wrong, it's got to be changed.
Well, I think its employment may just be for the town manager.
Yeah, we are responsible for the employment of the town manager, but not all the employees in the organization.
Yeah, okay, well, it should tell you, one of the town managers.
Okay. We can certainly look at that. Anything else before we move on?
I'm just curious, is that the charter, these reports?
No.
You look town government on the front page of the website.
Under Services Committee.
Put on that, you go down, you show your committees.
Committee assignments and public hearings, we have three, four public hearings coming up next.
Yes. The items that you referred.
The three, first, the second readings, and then the public hearings on the new ordinances. Do you need to have any committee assignments, anybody?
Economic Development will be reading Thursday, the 21st, at 6:00 p.m. out here.
Thursday, the 21st?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Next item is adjournment.
Adjournment.
Say it. Are we going to go further? Thank you.